All right, let's rock and roll. Welcome everyone to the Lincolnville Selectmen Meeting. It is the ninth of August. Mike, would you care to read the quote?
I sure will, sure. "To win it all, winners have to be obsessive about the fundamentals and doing the little things right." Dan Meyer said that.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to open the podium for any non-agenda-related items for the Citizen Forum. Seeing no one rushing up to the podium, let's continue along to the Administrator's Report.
I don't have a thing.
Wow. There you go.
If anything pops into your eye, just jump in. And before we convene here, we are short a Selectman who is hopefully having a great honeymoon. So he is excused. Let's move along to upcoming meetings and announcements.
All meetings are here in the Town Office unless announced otherwise. The Budget Committee is meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, August 10th, 6:00 PM. The Planning Board meeting that's listed on the agenda has apparently been canceled in my absence. School Committee is scheduled to meet Monday, August 16th, 6:00 PM. To be determined because I don't know where or how they're meeting right now. Broadband Committee meets Thursday, August 19th, 5:00 PM at the Town Office. Special Town Meeting hopefully will be scheduled for Monday, August 23rd, 6:00 PM. And the Board of Selectmen to meet next in regular session on Monday, August 23rd, immediately following the Special Town Meeting.
Great, thank you very much. And are there any upcoming community events anyone wishes to share? Yes?
This Saturday at 3:00 PM at the Fletcher Cemetery, there'll be a committal service for former Selectmen Barrows, and that will be followed up by a reception at the Center of Community Building immediately following.
Thank you. Any other events anyone wishes to share?
You have the wingdings, blueberry wingding.
Oh, thank you, yes. We had an audience member remind us that there's the blueberry wingding coming up. Let's move along to the meeting minutes from the 26th.
I move that the Board approve the July 26, 2021 meeting minutes as presented.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
I'm abstaining because I wasn't here.
Okay. One abstention. And we have a community member that has expressed some interest in being on the Recreation Commission, and we have their community interest form here in your packet. And we have said individual here. Does anyone wish to say hi, ask any questions?
Yes, definitely.
Would you please come up to the podium, introduce yourself for folks watching at home? And folks here.
Good evening, Douglas Grant, and I've filled out the community interest form for the Parks and Recreation Committee. And I've been a resident of Lincolnville since 2013. And we live over off of Route 1 in Duck Trap area.
So, thank you for your interest. It's good to meet you. Is this where we ask, do we call you the Flying Hawaiian?
Ooh.
I saw that on a plate up, and my wife may have mentioned you.
Yes, so my official, I'm an airline captain, so Captain Douglas Grant. I fly at 3:30, work for Hawaiian Airlines.
Oh.
And we also have to thank him for being the individual who has been caring for our grass.
That was next on my question, on my comments, but I figured that one trumped that.
So thank you for that, and thank you for your interest.
That's a lot of mowing, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's, I, it's, you know, I fortunately live across the street, so I just drive the tractor over there and mow. I don't do it all at one time.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Excellent, any other questions?
No.
All right, thank you so much for coming in this evening.
Oh, no worries, thank you.
Being able to put a face to a name. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move to appoint Douglas Grant to the Recreation Commission as a regular member with the term expiring June 2024.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much, and again, thank you for my hearing.
Do you know, not to interrupt, jump your meeting, do you know Cheryl?
No.
Cheryl's also on the Recreation Commission.
Because you guys now have a core.
Yeah.
Yay!
That's great. That is awesome.
And there's lots of work to do, so. And moving along, at our last meeting, the Board decided to table this until Selectman Ray could return. And... So I think I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, well, first, I wanted to apologize for getting the draft of the RFP to you so late in the day, or early in the morning, whichever it was. And, but, it's the same draft, and what the Broadband Committee is asking is just the go-ahead from the Board of Selectmen to continue working on that with the town staff time. And so it's ready to bring back to the Board for a final okay and/or edit. But I'd also like to kind of bundle that request with a related request, and that is for the Broadband Committee to pursue pursuant to final Board approval, grant application with the Island Institute or other people. We've identified a couple possible funding sources. And we'd like to get started on that. And in order to pay for any RFP, any feasibility study that goes down the bike. And that's basically it. We just don't want to take any town staff time without, you know, okay the Board. Now, this is, if you're reading the document, what we did is took a, an earlier RFP that's gone out from the town.
Sure.
Okay, and got rid of the dates, put in some ideas for the scope of work and the general plan principles. I mean, they're rough, and to the, I'm not, I don't know what, to what extent they meet, let's say, town standards. You know, I'm not sure of that. And we're obviously, you know, would welcome any Board, you know, input on any of those items, or additional items. Well, is that like an input finger?
Yeah, yeah, there was just one thing that I was, would like for the RFP to include.
What's that?
The technical information on the current infrastructure, specifically the type of fiber cable that...
I actually have that written in, number seven, yes.
Oh, I made it number seven, too.
Oh, there you go. Okay, well, here's what I, I would just, real top of the head said. We'd like to have them do a tech, full technical, whatever feasibility, do a full technical inventory of the infrastructure that we have, but also to relate that infrastructure to the underserved, the designation of underserved as is used by various funding sources. Like a clear correlation.
So...
I'm sorry?
No, I just want to thoroughly understand. So you're, you, once, what has identified what we have, how it relates to the population of quote-unquote underserved, and what that means?
Correct.
Okay.
Because from what we, from what we understand, various funding sources, possible funding sources, use kind of a tiered system where the unserved get priority, the underserved perhaps are number two in line. And we need to find out where we stand. And they base that metric, they base that on the technical, what's available to the people technically. And so we need to find out. And we'd like a clear correlation between the two, if they can identify that.
So is the subtext of that question, a estimate on take rates? Is that, is that the idea, is to look at the feasibility of the folks who opted, not opted in?
I, I'm not, you know, lately, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how they would figure in take rates.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, it's obviously, we're asking them to, you know, give the projected take rates, necessary take, sufficient take rates for, you know, a return.
Yeah.
But how they do underserved, I don't know.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Well, and also, this is, while it's presented as a whole, this is, it is, it's an incremental type of stuff. So we'll be gathering first the technical data, and from that, when we understand what it is that's here and what that can actually serve, from that then comes a financial estimate that'll be based on whatever the variables are that would go into extending the current infrastructure, replacing the infrastructure with the goal of the hundred symmetrical to every home in mind that was set for the Broadband Committee, if that makes sense. So then, when you get to the economical side of that, then you can get into take rates and the feasibility studies that go along with it. But first, it's really important to know what's here technically, and if that equipment can even fulfill what we've all decided is being the minimum. I hope that that made some sense.
Yeah, sure.
And again, it's not, it is incremental, there's gotta be multiple steps because it's not something that can be done all in one study. Again, as one part will affect the next one, that will affect the next one.
Okay.
So I do not know what's necessary, what kind of, do we need a general nodding of heads from the Board that it's okay to use staff time to fine-tune this document and then bring it back to this Board, so, before it goes out? Or is a motion that's necessary, or, I don't know.
I think it, it seems, as you said, you intend to put some more work into it. The committee is going to put some more work into it.
Yeah, yeah.
And David, if I could just, correct me if I'm wrong, you probably would want to have Sally put eyes on this before we got serious about sending this out.
We certainly could if we thought there was something wrinkly about it, for lack of a better word, that's a terrible adjective to use. Definitely before signing a contract, we'll want to have eyes to it. And maybe if we invest a little bit in the eyes early on, it makes it cheaper down the road before we sign the contract, so everybody knows what's, what's coming. But we issue RFPs periodically without too much in-depth review.
I would be an advocate for front-loading a little more of the work, and you get just the long-term unforeseen consequences of starting this ball rolling. I want to make sure that we're crossing all ITs and dotting all of our i's, particularly if we're going to be seeking grant monies or utilizing any of the ARP funds or anything like that, that we're really getting our ducks in a row, so to speak. So I don't think anything more than a general consensus to move ahead with this would be necessary at this point, particularly if you're going to add or change the scope of work that was submitted to the Board.
Yeah, and as I said, I, you know, invite any input from this Board, too. So what we will do is set up a time to work with David or another staff member and to get the language suitable for going out, and then bring it back.
Well, and if I could just, I have this written down so that it's concise, but I think, and what we're really looking for is asking the Board of Selectmen to allow the town administrator to prepare the RFP with the advice from the LBBCs. And so we're just starting the ball rolling. Then we will review the RFP again, then it'll be sent, then there'll be four to six weeks for the consultants to reply, and then the fees, you know, so it's, it's just, it's a, right now, what we're really looking to do, and forgive me, I'm not speaking for anyone, is to seek David's help in drafting the formal RFP for our review then to be finally set in, so.
Yep.
Yes.
That make sense?
That's what I, yeah, that's what I'm suggesting, yeah.
It does make sense. I, I'm a little, I'm trying to relate how this scope of work, I mean, obviously does in the big picture, but I'm just thinking in immediate terms, spelling out, you know, that, you know, we've got this very big goal of the, you know, affordable broadband of 100 to all residents, all of, all of that stuff. So that's a really big, long-term goal. But then, this scope of work is the very necessary and immediate questions that need to be answered. And so I'm just, I want to make sure that the consultants are really clear on what we're asking them, given that the long-term goal is this, but the immediate goal is what? Because these, these questions don't immediately answer or speak to that goal. It's like, do you know what I mean? It's the, it's the first step, but we're crawling, not running yet. And so I just want to make sure that we're not asking the consultants to give us an answer to the running question, when really what we want to know is the mechanics of how to crawl.
Sure.
Well, this is the most, I mean, to make an analogy, it's like turning the lights on. That's all we're doing. We're not even crawling or walking, we're just trying to see the room that we're in at the moment.
Right, so...
And all these concerns, we'll be able to, again, this is just to get started. So we're not even, I mean, it's, we're not response-worthy, these, what, this isn't going to go to anyone. This is just to let David start on administrative level, working on it, which it will come back to us, and we will be able to address those. Even at that point, if you wanted to call in a consultant for, you know, from a company like we've done in the Broadband Committee, or people from the Broadband Committee to further discuss, we can. So it's not like, this is, we're not doing anything that's going out to...
No, no, I get that, but I just, I, RFPs need to be very, very specific. And so I think we need to make sure to articulate somewhere in this RFP explicitly what the, you know, in, in the broad, you know, the sort of background, you know, background information, and then desired outcome. So the scope of the work is great, like, that's all the mechanics of what we would expect this firm or individual to do. But, you know, articulating a thesis statement, basically. This is what the town's goal for this RFP is, but, so that we can refer back to that.
Oh, I thought that's what all this was, though, because it says identify existing high-speed. All these things are the goal of the RFP.
Those are the mechanics towards the end of reaching the goal, but I, I just want to make sure that we're not making any assumptions.
I guess you've got to be way more specific. It's very generalized what you're talking about, so I don't, you've got to refer to something more specific.
But that's what I'm saying, like, the, there needs to be a statement of purpose for this. Like, yes, the scope of the work, like, these are the boxes that you tick off in order...
Well, but what I'm saying is, in order to get to that, doesn't mean that we need to stop the process here. This is the beginning, so...
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, I'm saying that in order to hire a consultant, they need to know what they're being hired for under, just under a thesis statement other than, beyond the mechanical aspects that they'll be working through.
So that's a suggestion on what we should be adding to this when David starts working on it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
A statement of purpose.
Yes.
Yeah, that's totally fine. I thought you were suggesting that we need to pull back and reexamine and rework it before we move forward in any step, which I didn't understand, so.
As a matter of fact, lately, it's got an asterisk by it. There's...
Whoa!
So it'll, it'll get in there, yeah.
But, you know, I just, having wrongly assumed that it was blatantly obvious what we are asking for, and then we went through several meetings with various entities where it's like, no, I mean, they just, in the past, it hasn't necessarily been as clear, and so it, we're, again, going back to the front-loading the work now, you know, the clearer of intent we can make this document, I think the better product we'll get in the shorter, the period of time, rather than us being like, no, 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 that's not what we meant, or some variation there, and, does that make sense?
I definitely think a fine-tuned, exact version of the RFP should be formulated before we submit it, for sure.
Super, yes. And I totally trust the Broadband Committee and working with David to...
Now, that gets two asterisks.
Keep layering it up. Okay, David, are you, do you have any questions? In, in terms of...
No, I don't think so, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that my knowledge of the internet workings is limited, and I'll lean heavily on the Committee for that.
Gotcha.
My knowledge of RFPs is pretty good, but my knowledge of internet hardware...
Okay, great. I like it. I like, I like the...
So, so we will go ahead and schedule time with David.
The Island Institute may have also, like, I mean, maybe I'm just making this up, but I feel like they may have, like, boilerplate RFP requests that we could also, you know, work with to compare, and just, just as a further...
Yeah, or, or resources, other, maybe there's other submissions that they have seen that they might be willing to share.
And no, no, we got, we got a lot of sample RFPs from Island Institute.
Oh, great.
And we just happened to, well, paste into Lincolnville one, because it was Lincolnville. And, but yeah, no, yeah, we've gotten a bunch from them, various towns. And they're very widely, as a matter of fact, it's interesting reading. Some of them are prosaic, some of them are less, you know, are just cut-dry type of thing.
Well, and boy, as we heard at our last meeting, keeping it Lincolnville-centric is more, more important than ever.
Yep.
All right, Mike, anything else on that right now?
No, there's, no, nothing about the RFP and the grant request. No, no, there's other updates, but that's later.
I just had my finger in that, looking at it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll...
We'll get to it.
You will. So any other questions for Mike or comments on that right now? Super, all right, moving along. We have an application from a qualified catering organization for an event on the 14th at Stone Coast Road, which is often known as The Edge. Any questions on this application? And if there's no immediate questions for the Board or for David, if anyone wishes to make a motion?
Yeah, I move that the Board approve and sign the Qualified Catering Organization Application for catered function as submitted by 111 Main Catering for an event occurring at 24 Stone Coast Road on August 14th, 2021, between the hours of 3:30 PM and 10:00 PM.
So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded, any discussion?
The, no representative here for that, David?
No.
Have we, have I, have we worked with 111 Main Catering, no?
I'd say as part of the discussion, it would be nice if just in general, and not that you were, anyone has control over it, but it just, saying it out there, people would be nice.
We invite any and all applicants to attend the meeting.
Yeah.
I think the, the, as a general rule, the catering world doesn't themselves, no offense, see the need, because nobody else requires it, so, but we're not anybody else, so.
No, we are special.
We are.
Well, and I would also think, just as someone who worked in that industry for a long time, you know, submitting it five days before an event is a bit risky in the matter that maybe something doesn't go your way, so I just would suggest...
Agreed, yeah.
And that's not meant in a spiteful or threatening way, just, I think for your own business health, it's probably a good thing to come in, if you can.
Probably, probably when we invite them to attend, we should just say, it is suggested that you attend.
Well, and that approval is not a foregone conclusion.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I would like to, I would like to make several assumptions, and I think we really have no choice here, given that someone's going to get married.
Right, yeah.
But that it is at a facility that we know is capable of handling such an event, so...
Especially 180 people in Waldo County right now, just, you know...
I mean, hopefully, we can, we can hang our hats on that. I do appreciate the very clear diagram, you know, it's, it is a reasonably professionally, you know, put-together application.
Yeah.
But, but the comments are appreciated and agreed.
Yeah.
So is there any further discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And moving along, at our last meeting, we had a discussion regarding the positive outcomes regarding the state budgets. And the Board's decision to use it to reduce the property tax commitment and the Special Town Meeting warrant that is before you, and so I will entertain... Oh!
Just one tidbit of information, I did, I think I mentioned it in the newsletter, that it had been sent for review by Council, which is what we do with all our town meeting warrants, and I got an email back saying it was fine.
Great. So, that being said, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the Board approve and sign the Special Town Meeting warrant for a town meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on Monday, August 23rd, 2021, at the Lincolnville Town Office.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And, moving along, as everyone may be aware, we have an ever-evolving environment that this COVID situation is presenting us. And so David and I had a conversation, and obviously, we are all wearing masks in the CDC, and the State of Maine, the Governor, has updated their recommendations. And so before you see a draft regarding revising our policies and procedures for interacting with the public and the like, and you'll notice that it gives a little bit more latitude in terms of needing to update the regulations so that if something changes rapidly, that it doesn't necessarily mean last-minute convene, convening of the Select Board in order to change it again. That way, we can be a little bit more dynamic in our response. Does anyone have any questions about this? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the Board approve the August 9th, 2021 update to the phased reopening of Lincolnville Town Office Plan.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And David, I'd like, oh! And David, I'd like, oh, duh, 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 first, before I put you on. Let's have the broadband update. Mike, you indicated that you had some additional.
Sure, at the local level, or a couple, just to keep you guys informed, the, um, the Broadband Committee, we are meeting with the Northport Broadband Committee tomorrow at five PM, just to, for a very informal, hey, where are you guys at, where are you guys at? Type of conversation. And, um, I'll be there at five, and maybe some other numbers as well. I, I don't know if it's, um, I'd say tune in from, believe your, your couch, but I don't know if it's broadcast or anything like that. And, secondly, were you guys inform, no, you were, I'm sorry, never mind.
Uh, I watched the meeting last time, um, that the Southwest Waldo group stated that they chose not to work with Lincolnville at this present time.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay, I was at a meeting where they told me that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And Jordan, did you?
And I actually don't have one. I feel terrible saying I wasn't in Iceland, but neither Josh nor I were able to attend the, the last meeting, um, which is the first time, and Steve Nicole Ty was there, but I, I don't have an update at the moment. And like you said, we'll, we'll be circling inward on ourselves more and more as this comes in, so.
Sure, okay, great. Um, and just, in, just for clarification, um, we have a little bit of a off-step between our notes and the, the agenda, so if it's okay, we'll do the Waldo County Commissioner update as number thirteen. Um, so I'd like to roll right into Selectmen updates, and then we'll talk about news from Waldo County.
Sounds good.
Sound good? Okay. Karen, you have an update for us?
I, I don't have anything to say. I know that doesn't sound right. No, uh, we have a, we have some committee meetings coming up for the Bigco Solid Waste Corporation.
Yeah.
Uh, but, no.
Okay.
No, I have nothing.
Okay, great.
No, I don't, no.
Okay, I don't have anything, Jordan?
No.
All right, that was quick. Well, moving right along, um, David, I would like to throw the conversation, uh, from our county commissioners first to you for an introduction and then the board discussion.
Yeah, well, um, included in your packet is an email that was sent to all the town offices in Waldo County from the commissioners. And I should say, and to City Hall, reference to Belfast, um, saying that they had determined to allot, as it says, allot twenty thousand dollars to each community, um, for seed money, potentially for broadband expansion within the county. Uh, since that email, and the, since that email came out, um, they issued another more explanatory note saying that they were going to not require communities to come to them to ask for the money, they were going to just send you it. And then today, received another letter from the county commissioners saying, um, that it was their hope that the money would be used for broadband, but it was not their requirement that it be used for broadband expansion. Uh, apparently, some communities may have objected to being limited in what they could utilize that for. Um, so, uh, they said, we didn't have to do anything, they would be mailing us a check for twenty thousand dollars before the end of the month, or by the end of the month. I do have some concerns, not so much for Lincolnville as I do for the county. Um, this is all, um, monies that they've received from the American Rescue Recovery Program Act, whatever it is. And with any money that comes from Washington comes usually strings and justification, where everything I've read thus far has been, when we send the town their allocation, you'll need to be able to explain to us at some point, how you spent that money and how it met with our requirements. And just the general letter saying, here's twenty thousand that we hope you're going to use for broadband expansion, means I presume you, that you could use it for something else, but is then the county going to get themselves in trouble by saying, you know? Yeah, here it is. Which really isn't, won't, isn't or won't be our worry, but I think we ought to do ourselves in the county a favor by saying when this money comes, or when we get this money, we'll utilize it for purposes that are identified within the recovery program.
Oh, yeah, no, I just asked, I haven't seen the letter, I just wondered, did, uh, is the county, the county didn't say anything to the extent of you can use this money for whatever, as long as it's within the confines of recommendations from the federal government.
Um, no, it, it, the most, and I apologize for not bringing them, but I know we don't really like handouts, and I intended to put it in your next packet. Um, it literally says, and we hope that you'll utilize this.
Well, it seems the money is intended.
Yes.
And I know in reading a lot of it, that that is a strong part of the reason why this money's coming down, so.
Yeah.
So, and it, well, it works in our favor to use it what it was intended for in the first place.
Absolutely, and it's, uh, at this point, not that I don't trust what the Waldo County Commissioners say, but it's seed money, or it's a promissory note at this point, and until you've got money in hand, don't go spending it. That'd be my advice. And the other, um, thing is, um, we, or we, the board had written a letter to Waldo County saying we'd like to help and participate in any discussions you'd have. And the county commissioners are going to have a meeting tomorrow at ten to have discussions about how they intend to have discussions about how they go about formulating how they're going to spend the rest of the money.
Oh, my.
A preliminary meeting or discussion, I guess.
How much is left? Uh, they said.
They got.
Nine percent is going to the town for, in their twenty thousand dollar checks, right?
They got.
And then they've got a couple of big projects.
They got a little seven point seven million dollars, but it's coming in two increments. My understanding, I'm not privy to the county's finances, but my understanding is it was coming in two separate installments, one this year, which they should have received, and one next year. They certainly have some, um, ideas about how they are looking to spend the funds. Um, I'm certain that they'll have to, you know, justify that what they'd like to spend the money on is within the eligible expenses. And, yeah, I mean, they talk about Waldo County Garden Project at one point six million, and another for boilers, where they, you know. And I don't, you know, the final guidance on any monies that we'll receive hasn't been issued as yet. So, you know, I think the slow, steady, you know, it consistently talks about broadband. Consistently talks about water and sewer infrastructure, it consistently talks about a couple of other things. And then the other, you know, there's still a little bit nebulous, for lack of a better word. And until there is specific guidance, um, I, you know, I'd accept the money on behalf of the town and put it in an account and track it and everything else, but I wouldn't spend a nickel. Because if you expend it on something that's not allowed, when and if you have to go back and tell them how you spent the money, if you haven't followed the program, they're going to look back to you to pay them back. And, you know, hmm, let's, let's try to avoid that scenario. Would be my best advice.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, this letter is a little dismaying in the amount of chickens that have been counted already, before they patched.
Yeah, I mean, they're, I think they're all reasonable, long-range plans for the county, you know, improving the communications center. Well, that obviously benefits all of us, and I'm, my instincts would tell me that they've been looking to try to figure out a way to finance that project.
Yeah.
For a period of time, and now this opportunity has presented itself, um, that everybody may benefit from, and I think they want to lay out, you know, don't, don't, in a nice way, don't come to us and ask us for seven and a half billion dollars.
Sure.
Because we are already planning on how they're spending it.
Sure, yep. Okay, anything else on that? Karen, you look thoughtful.
No, not that.
Okay.
Just something else, something else completely different.
Unrelated to?
Unrelated.
Okay.
Yeah, unrelated.
All right, uh, let's move along to the treasurer and payroll warrants.
I move that the board approve the treasurer's and payroll warrants.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And before a final motion, does the board have any other business questions?
Comments?
Yes.
Um, I know it wasn't on the agenda, but we did have a, 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 uh, report in our packets on the Lakes and Ponds Committee meeting.
Yep.
And there was a, a comment, a recommendation from our inland harbor master for Lincolnville, and I'm wondering if we should reach out to him for clarification and/or maybe we should sit with him.
It's, it's a safety thing.
Yeah, but I want to know, uh, what does he mean by guidelines more proactive, I, his description is pretty straightforward, and if it needs to be changed, I think we need to have a conversation with him.
Yep.
Or does he just need our blessing? I mean, I.
Yeah, yeah, it would be nice to, have you, have you had any direct communication with him regarding this?
I have not regarding this. The last, um, last communication I had with Justin, he was having, um, a health issue, and just wanted to keep me in the loop that he wasn't, he did the best he could, being proactive, but.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I highlighted that also, it kind of stuck out saying, you know, it'd be nice if we can help in some way to me, you know, he does such an amazing job that I want to make sure that we're not unintentionally encumbering his ability to do his job.
I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you for pointing that out, Karen.
Should I request that, um, he, I mean, he comes once a year.
Yep.
Do you want me to?
Well, I just wondered.
Try to get him to a.
I just wondered if he needs follow-up, or do, does he need?
Or just a communication from him, too, if, you know, if he feels like an, an email could be adequate, and that he doesn't necessarily need to be present, so that we could have a discussion, like, if there's some action that the board needs to take as a result, but I don't, I don't necessarily think that he has to come in, I know he's busy.
I don't either, I don't either, maybe an email, like you said.
Yeah, and then, you know, depending on where that, depending on what it.
I just, I look at that, and I'm like, oh my God, we haven't given him the tools to do his job.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah, I immediately thought the same thing, I thought, oh, man, I don't, I didn't, I don't want us to be making things harder on him somehow, so. Uh, because he's a great resource.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Well, I will entertain a final motion.
I move that we adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. Eat and tidy.
So Douglas, you got to sit through.
Not the short, not the shortest, but. Most people sneak out after their, their particular point of view.